Good evening. It is 7:00 PM, Monday, May 15, 2017. This is a special hearing of the Town of Speedway Board of Zoning Appeals. I am Mike Simonson, Chairman of the Board. Other Board members in attendance tonight are Mike Allen, our Vice Chairman, and Ernie Williams, a Board Member. Also in attendance is Kathleen Blackham with the Department of Metropolitan Development, and Michelle Lyte, our Recording Secretary. Have all who wish to speak been sworn?
They have.
Thank you. Would all please mute or turn off any cellphones at this time. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have we all had a chance to review the minutes from our previous meeting?
Yes.
I move they be adopted as published.
And I second that motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries three zero. Rules for those who wish to speak. The petitioner and remonstrator or proponents will each have 15 minutes to present their evidence. We will then hear from Ms. Blackham with DMD, after which there will be a five-minute rebuttal period. First order of business tonight is I need to notify the petitioner since we only have three here this evening. Any vote by the Board must be unanimous for it to be valid. Do you wish to continue?
Is your fourth person still expected?
I am unsure.
Okay. Yes.
Tonight's petition is 2017 UVS 002, 1926 Georgetown Road, T-Mobile Central LLC. Will the petitioner or their representative please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record?
Hi, Chairman Simonson and Board Members. My name is Sherilyn Bodie. I live here in Indianapolis, but I work for Smart Link LLC, which has their headquarters in Indianapolis, Maryland, and I do not have the street address of that. Haven't been there yet. You are all in receipt of a letter that I sent prior to the last scheduled, regularly scheduled hearing on May 3rd, which requested a waiver of your notice rules. As explained in that letter, the previous company who began the work and who did, worked with the property owner on the leasing failed to follow the zoning ordinance rules, which require that a public hearing be held when a wireless communication facility seeks to be located in the Special Use 34 zoning district, which is a district for fraternal lodges. And this location is the location of the American Legion, of course. Further complicating this matter, earlier this month, a city of Indianapolis planner signed off on T-Mobile's request for the temporary tower. They gave it administrative approval, which would allow them to go forth and get permits. Instead, they should have let them know that a variance of use was required. That approval, however, was revoked 10 days later, on April 19th, which is when I first became aware of this petition and became involved. On the afternoon of April 20th, I was called to help T-Mobile find out why their temporary tower had been approved and then later denied. I immediately contacted and met with city Indianapolis planners, went to, came to the town hall, met with the clerk's office, and then went to Michelle Lyte's office and had an impromptu meeting with Michelle Lyte and John Merritt. And the next day, I filed the application. I did, I was able to get the letters to the surrounding property owners and the sign that is required posted on the property within the statutory 10 days minimum. Unfortunately, because of publishing schedules, I was unable to get the newspaper notices in with that 10 days notice that is required. And that is what brings us here today. And we just want to say we really appreciate you coming out tonight and granting us this special hearing. I know there's, you don't probably like having two meetings in one month. There's a lot more fun things to do on a Monday night, middle of May, especially in the middle of May in the Town of Speedway. So we really appreciate it and just wanted to thank you. As I stated in the letter that I, I believe you, were also provided copies by Kathleen Blackham, it's a letter that I sent to the Indianapolis planners that requested their recommendation of approval of this petition, and in that letter, we offered conditions of approval that we would, thought would address what their concerns were. And in that letter, I said, "A variance of use process is an awkward process for our request, which is for a temporary, short-term tower." Having once been a planner for the city of Indianapolis many years ago, I know that a planner's job and the Board's task is to evaluate the variance of use by analyzing its immediate and long-term impacts on the surrounding, with the use and value of the surrounding properties. This temporary tower does not have long-term impact, as it's just a short-term request, and its immediate impact is undeniably positive. The variance request is not only not injurious to the community health, safety, and general welfare of the community, its very intent is to positively impact the community in that it'll provide essential and critical communications to the public attending the races and the other activities at the Indianapolis Motor Speedway throughout the 2017 race season. Of course, the temporary tower's most important purpose is for your premier event, the Indy 500 on May 28th. As you can imagine, the phone traffic that is generated by the crowd there is just without parallel. T-Mobile must install temporary facilities to augment what they already have in the community that's used 365 days a year. They must do this in order to have enough capacity to handle this enormous amount of wireless service traffic. Used to be just phone calls, now it's texting, sending photos, accessing the Internet. So it's, it's a big deal. And most importantly, in a crowd of this magnitude, there are numerous emergencies that will come up inevitably, and it's important to note that many of our public officials and emergency service providers utilize the T-Mobile wireless network as their primary means of communication, and they cannot function without fast, reliable, and consistent wireless service. Finally, I will address the existing tower on the property, not our tower, the AT&amp;T Temporary Tower, which is just, is existing just to the north of what our proposed site is. T-Mobile was willing to co-locate on this tower, but found that it's not structurally capable of supporting a second carrier. I have a document here that I will distribute just, in just a moment when I'm finished with my remarks. It's not structurally capable, wasn't built to, for a second carrier, even though that's an ordinance requirement. I'm assuming this requirement was not enforced in 2016 when it first came before you because it was a request for temporary use. Incidentally, our temporary tower happens to be structurally capable of supporting a second carrier, even though we are not asking for permanent, a permanent tower. Still, we're asking for temporary tower. And I have a document as well that addresses that and certifies that it can hold, if by some chance someone comes up in the next couple of weeks to month and wants to go on that tower, we could do it within the timeframe that we're asking for. We understand that AT&amp;T may have changed their mind about the tower being temporary and that this is of some concern to the planners, but we can assure you that our request is most definitely temporary. In that regard, we offered conditions of approval to ensure that any concerns that staff had concerning our request, and that is addressed in the staff report, has, that we have addressed it with our conditions of approval. And I believe you all have copy of that that was sent with the letter to Kathleen. We will permanently remove this. We won't be back. And the reason we won't be back is because we are, next year, we are going to go on the DAS. D-A-S. Is there another word to that?
No, it's the DAS.
DAS, which is, again, I should have wrote it down. I'm so sorry.
I better speak. My name's Mark Morris. I'm Engineering Operations Manager with T-Mobile.
Dress, please.
6215 Morance Trail.
Morance Trail.
Yes, sorry. It's in Indianapolis.
Thank you.
The DAS system is, is called Distributed Antenna System. What it is, is Verizon has a system at IMS. They have a bunch of antennas that surround the whole property, and they allow for others to co-locate on their system. We're going to be one, and AT&amp;T was offered the opportunity, and I guess it's declined, but we will not be back next year because that's where we're heading to. Right now, we've tried to get on before this season. We were unsuccessful in getting our equipment to work with theirs. It's right now still in the labs or working on it. We should have a solution, we're in, hopefully, in the next couple of months that, and then we can start, probably won't be till after the season because of the use, but we'll probably start installing before next season. So this tower that we're requesting today, we will not be back asking for additional use of this for, on that property.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I should, I fully meant to introduce Mr. Morris when I came up here and somehow failed to do that. The second, you have the proposed conditions of approval. The second one is similar to the first in that we will not submit a variance petition again, which has been done for the other tower, and will not file a petition, as Mr. Morris explained, for this site in the future, temporary or permanent. It's not going to happen. At the conclusion of the Indianapolis Motor Speedway race season, which ends on October 15th with the Red Bull Air Race, according to their website, we will remove all traces of this tower. There may be some fiber left, and if you have questions about that, again, that will be a question for Mr. Morris to answer because that's his specialty. The other thing that we wanted to offer, because we noticed it's, it's prominent on the other side, and it, it really does help screen the equipment at the bottom of the tower, is, is some sort of temporary screening or fencing. I would suggest the same kind of screening that's used on the tower. It is a chain-link fence with slats that appear to be like landscape slats. It's actually 3D, and it's, it's pretty attractive as chain-link fencing can go. So we're open to your suggestions. We will be happy to screen the equipment at the bottom of the tower. Along with these conditions, we ask that you incorporate our findings of fact into the record. I think I've addressed most of them, but we just want to say that this is not a long-term use, so this is not going to interfere with the long-term use of the property, the surrounding properties. It certainly won't interfere with the long-term goals of the comprehensive plan. We think it's a positive addition for, it's event-specific, it's temporary, but it's a positive addition that's needed by those who attend the race, the fans, the public, and the emergency service providers, and I would be happy to answer any questions. Or Mr. Morris can answer questions, or we can answer questions after the staff report or if there's any remonstrators.
You have any questions for the petitioner?
Not at this moment.
How tall will this tower be?
120, same height as the other one.
How tall is that?
The existing one, 120.
I have a few concerns, one of which is the, the height of the tower and the potential impact to the race fans, the crowd, just the general public in that area if something were to happen.
And that is an engineering question that is...
And we've, we've been down that road with, with AT&amp;T and others, and they all say they're, they're safe, they're fine, but that particular area is a very unique location in that several weekends a year, it is extremely populated. And if, if anything were to happen, it's not going to fall into a vacant lot. It's going to be catastrophic at best.
That would be, yes. And they are engineered, so, I mean, T-Mobile can't afford to have that kind of, you know, that kind of thing happen to, to people. I mean, that's, that's something that is carefully engineered, and Mr. Morris can answer questions. I'm going to go ahead and pass out these, a couple of these documents are structural documents.
That'd be fun.
If you, if you could give them more details about how safe it is to, or how it's engineered to be safe.
Well, this is a little bit different from a typical tower, and we're making it so it is only temporary. And I think, we may have said it before, but you may not have heard this part, is that we actually have a tower that we screw into the ground, and it goes in about 30 feet down, so that we can remove it, and there won't be any cement holding it into the ground. So it's engineered actually to hold our antennas and additional antennas. It's not engineered to fall at any way. The way these, and typically monopoles, when they're put up, they don't fall down. There's very few instances over the country, and that's usually when they get hit by a catastrophe, tornado hits them directly or something like that. And there's, when that happens, there's more to be concerned about than a tower being there.
Also, the timetable you're up against...
Yes.
...with regard to the construction and location of all this equipment, that area does not lend itself to that kind of disturbance...
Right.
...this time of the year.
Right.
Because of just the nature of the activity at the track...
Mm-hmm.
...and the Legion itself with all their guests coming and going. Is there any trailer-mounted equipment that you could bring in that would support what you need to do, so we're not looking at, you know, all the risks of the equipment and the confinement of the area with construction apparatus and activity and just the, the overall impact to the experience that the people that come here aren't looking to trample through a construction zone?
And we've, we've done exhaustive search to try to find something a little more temporary. And I think you're referring to a cell-on-wheels. The problem with this is our footprint. We're only leasing a 10-by-10-foot area from the VFW, and any type of cow needs guidelines in order to secure it, and we just don't have the footprint to put the guidelines in. And that would be, the VFW won't allow it because of, they use, obviously, you see they use their place for parking. And this is the only solution we could come up with that'll get us the height to get us over the grandstands and allow us to direct our signal into the IMS area.
And the, the comment about public safety use, I've done some research, and there's not one public safety company, unit, that supports activities at the track that's on T-Mobile.
Well, actually, Homeland Security is, is on T-Mobile, and they do use us.
And in addition, they don't communicate with cellphones, based on my research. They are all utilizing two-way radios and their own networks because of the potential concerns of a cellular network and the amount of traffic that could be on it.
But the people with the emergency do communicate with their cellphone.
They use both, and I know Homeland Security does use both because they've told us that they do, and we have government and entities have, have a stress to us that they would like our coverage to be better in this area, too.
The predominant players in the public safety realm at the track do not use T-Mobile. They're on other carriers.
Well, that may or may not be true. I know T-Mobile is now becoming more, more popular with people and with government entities using our system because we offer a cheaper alternative. So, you know, and it's not just security, it's also people in the track that may have a 911 emergency that need to be able to use their phones.
Yeah. We all know that we're not number one or two, but we're very close. We're getting closer all the time.
The track has ample staff in place, too, that monitor the activities of the patrons and can respond as needed to their, their concerns.
Yeah, and we're looking at the wider area as well. There's a lot of, I mean, I, I don't participate in the camping that goes on during the month of May, but I know that that whole area is just, you know, full of people for days on end that are, with their RVs or tents or whatever. And so we're looking, you know, at that kind, I'm referring to that kind of activity as well, not just what might be in, in the race, but people coming, going. I mean, there's more, more problems that, you know, the people who are assigned to the track can handle, just because it's just so huge, and you guys know much better than I do about that.
And any type of emergency such as that, seconds count, and you can't be waiting for somebody to go find somebody from the IMS to make that call for you when you have the capabilities or should have the capabilities right there. And you can save a life just by simply being able to have that access right away instead of having to wait a minute or two, or whatever it takes.
If approved, how long would construction last? How long would it take? Because right now, you have 12 days.
Oh, less, probably about a week. The tower itself takes two days, and I'm actually talking to our construction engineers to see if we can go in at night and do the work to not, to avoid interfering with people and the activities that go on during daytime. I don't know exactly at the VFW how many people are parking there now, who have trailers that might, I don't want to interfere with what there is, but if that's an option, that's what we will do.
I drove by there today, and your 10-by-10 area is very well-defined by campers that are parked completely around the spot, so you don't have a ample...
They're already there.
...room to set up for a construction project. And another, when did you realize that you, there was a deficiency in your network that was going to need to be upgraded for this event?
This is not a deficiency. I mean, this is something that's needed every year. I mean, I've been in the industry since the mid-'90s. I remember back in Cell One, you always had a cow, as we talked about earlier, at the Coke lot. I remember that. I wasn't involved specifically with it, but it's event-specific. There's no deficiency because, you know...
When did you realize that you didn't have adequate coverage for the event? When did you realize that we need to do something to improve the coverage...
After the DAS.
...for the, the event?
After they found out the, the DAS solution would not, was not capable.
Well, it was actually last year's event, which was, I believe, the 100th running of the I and the F. But we've been in, it's not just this, it's our only option. We've put in right-of-way sites. We've also beefed up the existing surrounding sites that we have. This is just the last piece of our puzzle right now that we can solve, because right, after the, last year, we actually tried, we're really trying to get on through the DAS system before this year started. We just weren't able to make that work out with, working with Verizon, trying to get the lease completed with them in time and give us ample time to build it.
So you knew a year ago that you had to make some improvements?
Yes.
And here we are, 12 days before the event, trying to come up with a solution for it.
Yeah, and believe me, we would have preferred to have this done a long time ago. We were unfortunately misled by our site ac firm that was working for us, and this is the reason why we brought in Sherilyn.
When did you know you weren't going to be able to hook up with the Verizon system inside the track?
I believe we started, I would say, last year on December, January of this year. That's when we hired the other site ac firm to start working for us, and we were, of course, we were led to believe this is going to be administrative approval. We actually, as you heard one time, were administratively approved.
That was in April?
That was in April, and that's why we thought...
So December to April, or four months?
We were, yeah, that's typically what it takes. Yeah, with our designs, coming up with, getting a lease together with the VFW and negotiations and that, that point, it takes time.
When did you realize you couldn't work on the Verizon network?
We've been, we have, it's, it's not, it's not like we don't, can't work on the Verizon work, where we're still working with them to try to get this pushed through. So we're, we're doing both in conjunction. So we were working on these right-of-way sites plus the VFW and our surrounding sites in conjunction with working with Verizon. We had actually hoped that we would get the Verizon done before the season so we could go on that, and we wouldn't be here. Fortunately, that just didn't work out for us.
You said you had some equipment that just didn't, hasn't been fully developed yet?
It's, no, that's correct.
When did you realize that that equipment wasn't available?
About two months ago. They're still working on, yeah.
But, again, there's these long periods of time where things could have been placed on a much better schedule than where we're at today.
Here's a problem, and I work for a site acquisition firm now, and when a site acquisition firm is hired, their job is to go out, find a site, that's part of it, get a lease with that person. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of paperwork, negotiation, and at the same time, as soon as they, sooner than later, a good acquisition agent would, would check into the zoning, do the research, and this would never have happened. I can tell you that being, especially with my background, zoning is the way, I came from zoning and went into this industry. So it's my, it's uppermost the thing I think about. I'm not as good at construction, but I know zoning. And the first thing I would have done had, we'd been hired, and we weren't, we just started working for this firm a couple of months before this happened. We're new, Smart Link is new in this, this area. I'm not new, but our company is new in this area. But the first thing I would have done was researched online, which you can do, and the first thing I would have seen was that it was, there was a variance of use for the tower that was there. So that was a big failing, huge failing, and that's why we're here today.
Well, I believe the previous person working for T-Mobile was involved with the AT&amp;T tower. They knew very well the process.
It looks that way. Yeah. We don't understand.
Yeah.
So there's a lot of interesting twists.
It is.
There are, and when we found that out, unfortunately, that was when, at a meeting with the city, that's when we learned about how intricately he was woven into the AT&amp;T process, and we let him go at that point, and that's when we hired Sherilyn and her company.
But yes, I, we don't know what you would have said if we came on March 16th or March 15th or whatever, but that is what we would have done if our company would have been in charge. And I'm not just saying that. I'm truly, that's the way I do my job, and I've been doing this off and on for 15 years.
Okay. Any other questions?
Not for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have any remonstrators or proponents who wish to speak about the petition?
Chairman, my name's Ben Snoblet. I live at 1851 North Auburn, and in listening to their petition in front of the commission, I've got a couple of concerns. Number one, that's a flood plain, and Speedway knows it well. That's one reason why the Coke plant is located where it is, because of the aquifers that are below ground that continually feed. And one of the concerns is if you're going to put a 110-foot tower in there and have a, basically a screw, it's all sandy soil. And I don't know, the last thing that we need in the Town of Speedway is have something happen to a temporary tower that would take place that close to the track. The Indianapolis Motor Speedway and the Town of Speedway goes to great expense in order to protect the citizens of Speedway, and that would concern me a lot in relationship to the load that it would be carrying, and if it said that they could carry, you know, two cell towers on that, on a temporary tower, knowing what AT&amp;T did on their, on their tower in relationship to that, and they said that they can't even carry two at that point in time. So that's one concern. The other concern is, the fact is that, you know, both previous and this carrier would say that they're temporary. And what, you know, my concern is, once it's up, you know, what ability do we have to tear it down at that point in time? We can disconnect it, then it's sitting there forever, you know, from that event. And then it's up to the Legion to get it off. So, you know, that's the other concern from that area. It far exceeds any other height requirement other than the pagoda. So, you know, now we're, we're putting a, a series of 110-foot towers along Georgetown Road, and I don't think that's what the town had in mind when they went to, in basically putting up our linear park along there. And from that standpoint, I agree with them that if they could definitely ride on the existing structures, that's the best thing to do. But I would recommend if they do, you proceed with it, that we have a bond or some sort of insurances that they're going to be able to take that tower down once the events are over with, and so that we have the, the amount of money that would take to remove that tower from our backyard, so. So that's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak for or against the petition? Seeing none, we'll hear from Ms. Blackham with the Department of Metropolitan Development.
Good evening, Chairman Simonson, members of the board. Kathleen Blackham with the Department of Metropolitan Development, 200 East Washington Street, room 1842. Staff's recommendation of denial is based primarily on the ordinance. First of all, the ordinance does permit wall-mounted and roof-mounted wireless communication facilities in the SU 34, but they does not permit the monopole, which is what they're requesting today. Staff is also concerned that just 260 feet south of the existing pole, they want to put in another pole. Under the ordinance, it says if any pole is proposed, proposed within one half-mile radius of another tower, that tower must be identified along with reasons that the existing tower cannot be used for additional wireless communication facilities. And they are indicating that the, I think you provided a letter that, that states that no additional antennas or equipment can be placed on that existing pole. Staff is somewhat perplexed by the fact that they, they reinstalled or upgraded that pole just recently, and staff doesn't understand why they are unable to put additional equipment on that existing tower. The other concern staff has is the proliferation of cell towers in this area. Until this evening, staff was unaware that they would be able to accommodate another carrier on this, on this monopole. But bringing in another pole that into this area, staff does not believe it is appropriate, nor is it permitted by the ordinance. The ordinance, there's the purpose of the ordinance, I won't read, you can read that for yourself, it's on the first page of the staff report, what the purpose is, and staff does not believe that this is appropriate, nor is it, nor should it be permitted. And with that, staff would be glad to answer any questions that you might have.
What bearing does the floodplain have to the construction of this? And are there any environmental permits that may or may not be required for the location of such a structure within a floodplain or protected district?
I do know, and staff was aware of it, the impact from the previous tower, and they had to, staff's research indicated that they had to contact the Department of Natural Resources and work through them to determine if there was anything additional that needed to be installed, or, you know, special construction that would relate to that floodplain. But yes, this whole area in that, as you know, is in a floodplain. Staff would say too, that if it is a, if you, if it would be approved, did it be approved subject to the two conditions, and that's on page three of the staff report. First of all, the site would be developed in substantial compliance with site plan and the elevations, filed dated April 26th, and the variance of use request would be subject to those four conditions that Ms. Bodie provided to you and is included in the staff report, and those were filed dated May the 10th, 2017. So if you're inclined to approve that, staff strongly recommends that your approval be subject to those two conditions.
So I know the previous approval that we granted for the other tower was based primarily on the fact it was supposed to be a ballasted platform type of tower, and not as much of an impact to the area, because they weren't physically planting it into the ground. And the SU 34, is that a more reasonable type of possible request than putting another monopole structure in, which is foundation-mounted into the ground?
I'm not sure what you're asking, so if-
I know, we, we ended up with something different-
Oh, yes.
With AT&amp;T.
Yes, much different.
However, our initial approvals were for a much different type of-
Less impactful installation, yes.
Tower. And, and that was probably one of the reasons it was approved to begin with, is it wasn't, its construction in general indicated temporary.
Yes.
Because it was just laying on top of the, the ground with weights holding it in place, whereas what we have now is nothing near that, and what they're proposing is also a, a tower that is physically planted in the ground on a type of foundation, which leads people to think more permanent than-
That is correct.
-something that can be picked up and hauled away.
That is correct. And, you know, staff is concerned about the temporary nature-
Yes.
-and what has occurred, and it's probably unfair that this request is influenced by that, but it is, you know, that tower was initially approved on a temporary basis for one year, they came back, it was approved for a second year, and now, as you know, they have filed the, the petition for it to be permanent. And-
The process of the second year and the modest upgrade, we ended up with a completely different structure.
And from the information that has been filed so far, that tower that cannot accommodate any additional equipment. And that is also a concern for, and in violation of the ordinance, because they are, they are required to provide for-
Even if it's technically temporary?
Yes.
That doesn't relieve them from that requirement?
There's nothing in the ordinance that relieves that and says, you know, it's, it's no exception.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Blackham?
No, thank you.
No.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. We'll now have a five-minute rebuttal period, if you'd like to-
There's been a lot of-
Press any of the questions or concerns that were raised by staff.
Yes, there's been a lot of questions and concerns raised. One thing about the AT&amp;T tower that we're talking a lot about is that, and again, I'm not an expert in antennas, at least not this kind, I've never seen them before. If you've been by there, you've seen the big gargantuan, there was even an article in the paper about it, because Verizon's using the same stuff at a different location. These big, humongous pieces of balloon-like equipment. That's why they can't put anybody else in the tower. That's why there's only, there's only enough structural capability for one carrier. As I said earlier, our, the tower that we, the temporary tower we are proposing can hold another person, but we don't even, we, it's not something that we, we want to do that we planned for. But it was mentioned in the staff report that that was an issue, and we're not really sure how the other tower got built without having to meet the ordinance. But what we're saying is, on that particular point, we can meet the ordinance. One thing that was brought up during the staff report was the distance from one tower to another, if they're within a half-mile, I forget the exact words, that's a problem. But the issue with, with that is that, I don't even believe that staff required there be a distance separation, and we haven't been given those rules to have a distance separation here. This is a temporary, unique, never-to-be-repeated, event-specific use that, as I said earlier, is not ideally suited to a variance of use, because we're standing here and we're evaluating on things. If you read the staff report that explains why we have a wireless communications facility ordinance, everything in that paragraph is long-term. It's not about today, it's not about this event that, that we have certified in our conditions that have been offered, that we will not come back. We don't know what you need from us, a bond or whatever, to believe us, but we're putting it, we're putting that in writing, we're going to follow through with that, and we're open to anything, any other suggestions you have, so that you'll feel comfortable with that. We've explained that they're going to the, the new system.
They can have a lease to it if they want to.
Yeah, we also have a copy of the lease, if you would like, a copy of the lease that's been signed by the parties. Would you care for that?
That's not necessary.
Not necessary, okay. One thing I want to point out is that I read the minutes from last March, and, and I know that there's things you just talked about, there's these things, like it wasn't supposed to happen this way, but at that time, when the staff report was crafted, and I believe it was still Kathleen, it was a good location for a tower.
For a temporary tower.
For a temporary tower.
But a platform tower.
Yeah, and-
There was nothing there at the time, there was no-
Right, and we can't co-locate on it, because the staff did not require it to be co-locatable.
Staff required it, they just didn't follow through.
So it got-
Staff didn't change their requirements of the ordinance, they just didn't follow-
The ordinance requires it, so it-
It's required by ordinance, AT&amp;T did not follow the ordinance.
But they were re-approved in last October?
We weren't aware, we weren't aware of the structural capability of their tower.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Like I said, what, what we ended up with is not really what we approved.
And we're not, we really, it's awkward, but we really don't want to litigate that other case, even though it's impacting our request. We're being told, we don't want you to do what they did, because they lied to us. They said they weren't going to come back, they came back. They said they weren't going to be permanent, now they want to be permanent. We, we had no control over that, and, and other than the fact that we can't, the only thing we care about, as far as they're concerned, is that we can't co-locate. And I, in my opinion, grouping these towers in the place that they're most needed for the temporary period of time, and I'm, again, I'm not talking about the AT&amp;T tower, because I have no control over that. I didn't, that's not part of my, of our equation. But grouping them is, is, is just no different than spacing them. And again, this is short-term, not long-term. Long-term is, is what the wireless communications facility ordinance, if you read that paragraph, everything in it is long-term. This is why we have this ordinance, because of these long-term issues and concerns of our development in our community. So this is temporary, and we want you to look at it that way, and we don't want you to think too much about the AT&amp;T tower, although they had, did not stand up to their word. This is something we just want for one period of time, and then you'll never see us again, ever.
The concern about the-
Unless we see it at the race.
The concern of the uniqueness of the area, the, the timing, and other things we cannot change.
Right, and, and we'd be happy to, if there's conditions upon maybe, I don't know for certain that Mr. Morse can get nighttime construction, but that's something we certainly be willing to, to do, to explore, so-
It's not the day or night, it's just the, the timeline you're, you're facing.
Which is-
And it's, it's not good, and it's very challenging at best, and-
Yeah. Yeah, this is not the time that we ever would have wanted.
We have similar concerns with, with the tower that's in place, with, with safety and, and issues of what-ifs.
Right.
Regardless of what engineering studies you can show me about the, the structural stability of these things.
Mr. Chairman, you already stated that there's already campers around that-
Yes.
-location. Have you talked to the owner of the property about what would happen if you decide, if construction starts, what's going to, how are they going to move those campers or accommodate them? Because they might be there long-term for the rest of the month. And they usually like to pick out their spots-
Yeah.
-on purpose, you know, for, you know, efficiency or whatever.
Right. The only big equipment we're going to have is when we put the tower in. After that's installed, all it is, is just a crew working on setting cabinets, one cabinet, and then that's it. We're not taking up a lot of room at that point, so you're talking two days where we're going to have a lot of, have big equipment on the property. After that, it's just guys hooking up the equipment, and hooking up the antennas.
How, how will this potential antenna or tower be connected to whatever network that's-
It's fiber ZO has already been permitted, they got, they received approval.
How are they, where is this fiber coming from?
I don't know the route, actually, I'm sorry about that. I can find that out and let you know, but they're bringing it in from, I believe, south, coming north on the proper, through the right-ofways.
But they'll be stringing it overhead?
I believe it's coming overhead, I believe it's following the existing utility lines that are coming in that way.
So we have that potential equipment also in the neighborhoods and, and in the campgrounds and whatnot, trying to-
They don't really, they don't require a lot of equipment. There's maybe a bucket truck, and they're pulling, pulling the lines through, and they attach it to each pole, and it's, it's pretty, pretty quick operation for that. I would think it'd take more than a half a day to get that all completed.
Are you familiar with the new ordinance the town has in place with regard to cell towers, and I believe all utilities have to be underground?
Again, this is temporary, the facilities will, the, the electric utilities will be underground, and I'm, I don't know for a fact that we're overheading it, but once it's, once we're removing it, they're going to remove their overhead lines. Because actually, they're going to feed us at the IMS, and they're going to bring their, their circuit over to the IMS for us. The circuit, what I mean by fiber, they bring a fiber line to the IMS building. That's where, that's where we want it, but unfortunately, this is where we have to have it for the season.
One thing I wanted to point out, and you may or may not be familiar with different carriers, you know, eight, and this is obviously, the AT&amp;T tower on the north side of the property is, is unique, but AT&amp;T typically has eight by 10, is eight by 10, 12, what am I trying to say?
What, their shelter?
Their shelters, yeah.
I don't think they-
No. They normally have a large equipment area, because their equipment is large. T-Mobile, if you go around the city, country, whatever, you will find just the H-frames with a few suitcase-sized cabinets on them. So when you're thinking of this site and worrying about how it's, you know, going to fit in here and how it, how it looks, which is valid concerns, but I just want you to differentiate it from some of the bigger, Verizon and AT&amp;T, they use different equipment. And they, they don't, T-Mobile doesn't do buildings, never has, because their equipment is so small, it doesn't need a shelter, so-
Nevertheless, you want to build a 120-foot tower.
But I'm talking about the equipment on the ground, not the tower. That, yeah, the tower is the same height regardless of what kind of equipment's on the ground.
Yes.
Because it has to communicate with other towers, and it can't have-
How, how deep in the ground does the tower go?
30 feet.
30 feet. So you're going to need an auger truck.
Yeah, that's why I'm talking about the equipment used, it's going to be to install the, and drill it into the ground. But it's not, again, not in case with concrete, not like AT&amp;Ts, and it is easily removable same way.
No concrete will be left behind, because there is none.
No.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I move, we move along.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for having the time.
Thank you for your presentation. I'll entertain a motion to vote on this petition.
I so move.
I second that motion.
Have the ballots, please.
In regards to petition 2017 UVS 002, the vote is three to zero against.
If that is a denial, that's not a continuance.
That is a denial.
That is correct.
Because it's a unanimous vote.
Excuse me?
It's a unanimous vote by the board, so it is, it is a valid vote.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Is there any other business to come before the board at this time? Seeing none, our meeting is adjourned at 7:50. Our next scheduled meeting will also be a special hearing on June 28th, 2017, at 7:00 PM here at Town Hall. PM here at Town Hall.